All right, we are live and let's see if I can make it stop.
It is. A jump.
I make. Can I have that just for you? This is one I want to put. Probably good, I had that one, but now I'm just. Just try this, hopefully it doesn't.
Oh my god. Hard to walk. Should be, should be in your. Yeah.
You can get started.
Okay. It is. Calling this committee of the whole meeting to order jocks and President Harrington's absence. I am wanting to meet as President Pro Tem and also as kind of head of planning and zoning. Purpose of the meeting is to give all those who are not on planning and zoning an opportunity to ask questions about the proposed zoning code updates and to get an overview from Matt about them. The folks at planning and zoning have heard these discussions for months now. I hope are pretty well understand what's in the code. Just a couple of points. I don't believe this is, I would, I would not consider this a major update to our zoning code. We are not changing philosophy of zoning, we're not changing style. This is more of a tweaks in additions, a few subtractions. We're adding things like an ag zoning classification. We're clear for updating our plan unit development, PC zoning. And we're removing some things like the, our previous attempts at playing development. There are some tweaks to our notifications, some that are, may just recently. With the information we got on the West McPherson zoning case. What is not included, there is no farm animal or type legislation. That was, that was moved off to the side and there's nothing farm animal later other than the ag district in the zoning code. But having said that, this is a huge change to the actual physical structure of the document. Anybody who's worked with large Word documents know there's, knows there's a point of no return where you really just cannot, you can no longer modify the document. For, for those of you who don't work with Word, don't understand what I'm saying. Imagine the county, the state Route 68 road project in Arlington when they ripped the whole road up down to the, down to the ground and then rebuild it from the base structure of the road up. At the end of the day, you still have the same two lanes going through Arlington, but it was a completely new road. This document got recreated from the ground up, in essence, a blank sheet of paper. And they created a brand new Word document so that, so that it is, it is, so that it is, it can be maintained going forward. The end result of that was exactly the same as the previous document. But there, there was a heck of a lot of work to go from point A to an essence point A. No change to the code, a lot of change to everything underneath and, and original planning and the attorneys that they've worked with did all that work and I, I, thanks to them for doing it. And thirdly, this zoning code is not perfect because no zoning code ever is perfect. We will change this zoning code in the future, probably next year, in ways we probably don't know right now. We will still have the Board of Zoning Appeals because I guarantee you there will be a case that comes through the Board of Zoning Appeals that simply knows that the code could ever, could ever handle. And, and this code is the same way. Zoning codes are always moving living documents as time changes, as circumstances changes. The zoning code changes with it and that's, in essence, what is happening here is a tweak to make our zoning code more usable for Finley in 2023 and going forward, but that process will continue. And so with that is kind of the base of what we're talking about here. I'm going to turn it over to Matt to give, run through kind of the update and and please ask questions and we'll keep that the best of the best in the world. Explain our reasons for the changes that were made.
I'm Matt Credon here, Director of Regional Planning. We have been the traditional planning and zoning support for the city of Finley. So go ahead and get started. Timeline, there was just to emphasize, there was a lot of discussion before this even went to become legislation. So starting, we had five, five meetings over seven hours of public discussion. You can see part of that public discussion, we removed the farm ordinance, farm animal ordinance because there was so much to discuss. So this was all meetings that occurred at the Planning and Zoning Committee before we even moved to legislation. Other forms of public feedback, there are three articles in the Courier, in January, March and April. And also we've had all the drafts of this up on the city website. We have entered into the legislative portion of this. As you can see in front of us, went to Planning Commission in May and June, which they tabled it. In July, they voted upon it. And then in August, it went to the Planning and Zoning Committee, which they voted upon. And now we are, here we are today for a meeting of the whole. Major changes, changes to public notices. We added three districts, agricultural, I3, PUD, removed two districts, PMUD and PRD. We worked the alternative energy sections. Significant changes to the sign code and to conditional uses.
Can, yeah. Can you just go back to that and tell me what all the abbreviations are?
We have, we have, there's a slide for each one, that's just kind of.
All right, that's fine, I just don't want some of those.
Just a few notes before we get started. Last big update was 2017. In between that, we've done smaller updates. This is, like Grant said, it's, it's a significant update, but it's not really a change in philosophy. It's more of a lot of corrections, a lot of tweaking. We consulted with a zoning attorney who recommended some of the changes we will discuss. He mostly looked at a lot of process, Planning Commission processes, BCA processes and things that might trip us up. He did not look at, you know, what the setback should be or what, what the standards should be, but just more process. And lastly and importantly, this update does not change the zoning map. You know, upon this update, there will not be parcels zoned I3 or agricultural. Those would have to be asked for through the normal process that, that we go through for rezoning.
Just makes them available?
Makes them available, correct. So now we're going through, each slide will be different changes. We removed Robert's Rules of Order.
Why is that?
Attorney stated its liability that a small misstep could cost the city in court. The municipal code does not, you know, city council does not refer to Robert's Rules of Order in the code. Only place you can find Robert's Rules of Order is chapter 11, the zoning code. He recommended to moving it to a policy document.
And in, and essence, that also means like we'll continue to practice in that fashion. But if you mess one thing up, it doesn't open you up for, you know, somebody throwing something out.
Using it as a framework, we're not currently referencing.
Yeah. Not legally bound to it. And additionally, I think it is worth noting, I'm sure you'll mention it somewhere else, but again, these are go forward, right? So it's like, for example, the requirements with putting in paved pathways to back structures or like a back garage, different things like that. We're not going to retroactively go back and get people to do that, it is the standard moving forward.
Public notices, proposed change to public notice. Currently, when an item goes to Planning Commission, the, all properties within 250 feet are notified by letter. The applicants foot the bill for the mailings, they have to supply us with the envelopes and the postage. We're proposing to change it to 500 feet. I have several maps to show you what projects would look like with the new standard. Additionally, when a rezoning goes to Planning Commission, there's a sign put up because it went to Planning Commission. But while it's receiving its three readings at city council, there's no sign. This proposes that a new different sign would say this item is before Planning Commission for a zoning change. So we would notice, so under the new code, if we had a rezoning, we would notify everyone within 500 feet of the property. We would put up a sign while it's at Planning Commission and then a second new sign would be put up, the Planning Commission one removed, saying this is at city council for its three readings.
So these, these two changes specifically were added by the Planning and Zoning Committee after, after the West McPherson zoning indirect. We, in response to the, some of the things that they, they told us. And they were, I think they were, they were spot on and they also made sure it was the same type of notification happens for BZA cases. In essence. The signage.
Yeah.
Yeah, for BZA cases.
So the, this is Lincoln School, this is going through the rezoning process. So yellow is Lincoln School. Green was who was notified of the project. So we, we notified 50, 59 households. That's 250 foot radius. If we expand it to 500 foot radius, we will then, instead of 59 people, we'll notify 141 addresses of the proposed change. This is the McPherson. Yellow is the, the site. 250 feet was 24 addresses, 500 would be 45, 45 notifications sent out. This was a conditional use for a home. Green is 19 addresses expanded, it goes to 53 addresses would be notified. And lastly, this is Sandusky. This is for the conditional use for duplex. We'd go from 31 addresses to 95 addresses. So that's kind of showing what, how it will expand.
That, that cost is borne by the applicant, correct?
That's correct.
So it's really, in this case, it's tripling the expense.
It's interesting, the examples, I just was making that mental note, the density.
Yeah.
About where it could be a large parcel versus multiple smalls, just thought that was interesting.
Was this driven off of our first discussion?
Yes.
I, I mean, ultimately, we kind of thought that over notification might be a little better than under. And, and I think it was pointed out by the neighborhood that perhaps it might have been. Just their cost.
Well, what the notification should be, I think right now we're doing regular, it's a SPS letter. Think if we would develop our website to have, I've seen this with other committees, nice and nice and set out a postcard that says, please go online for a case BZA 1234. If you type it, you go to, you go to the website, here's BZA case 1234, you have, you have details on the, on the proposal. So there's a lot of opportunity for better communication with it, but this isn't immediate, an immediate response.
You're saying that postcard being cheaper than a letter?
Yes.
What do you, what do you, your code on that?
But the letter too, you, 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 the letter also goes to people.
You can type that in computer.
You know, being able to use.
But that's, don't have that.
That, that's not in the code, this is just the sort of reasoning behind, behind it. There's, but there's, what I'm just saying is there's still, there's opportunity for better communication. That's part of our, that's part of our strategic plan that we're going to communicate better. There's opportunities necessary to continue to communicate better.
And here's the perfect example, density going 500 feet only increases it five addresses. This is a Lighthouse Church site plan that just went through. So in general, I agree with Brian. I'd rather over notify than under notify. And I'd also state that our, our fees for City Planning Commission are pretty reasonable compared to some of the larger cities around us and then very competitive, the smaller ones. Okay, BCA public notice. Proposal is that for BZA cases, a sign similar to the Planning Commission one would be posted on the property, on the property location of BZA. This does not include a mailing of the 250 feet. So this would just be a sign and then you guys notify the properties directly adjacent.
What color is that sign going to be, Matt?
Uh.
Yeah.
Tell her you guys.
Something that's angry.
It could be something that's not natural.
Yeah, something that's.
We'll probably do blue, green, red, orange, you know, we'll have a nice process. We'll figure it out.
I guarantee whatever color that sign is, somebody will not see it.
Translucent.
Okay, Planning Commission changes. Similar to Robert's Rules of Order, a little bit removed order of business, burden of proof, Planning Commission actions. I'd say not necessarily. What it does is refer to the ORC 713. And the attorney about, you know, changes occur to ORC 713, we don't know about it, we're not in connection with 713. Our code conflicts with Ohio revised code. So he recommended putting all those items into the policy document that also states that we utilize Robert's Rules of Order as part of the policy document and not part of the actual code. Sorry, I can't forget. It feels very touchy. Okay. Along the lines of the BZA criteria for granting variance. And he recommended we add the seven criteria for granting a variance as set forth by the Ohio Supreme Court. So we had similar to these criteria, but this is the actual official language as adopted, as, as kind of set forth by the Ohio Supreme Court. And these are the seven kind of criteria that the Board of Zoning Appeals should consider when weighing a variance decision.
And Matt?
Yes.
In that, so those seven criteria. Is that, then, so the, you'll, you'll look at those seven issues and have a yes or no on each person, kind of, right?
That's, that's kind of how the board should approach it. They should look at each case and answer those questions.
Right. And that, but that's just a guideline. You could answer no to all of them, still grant caring.
Correct. Okay, so we've proposed an additional, a new district, agriculture, agricultural A1. Permits traditional agricultural activities, a minimum of five acres to be eligible. Often used as a placeholder for properties annexed into a city, allows the current use while waiting for long-term development. I anticipate this designation to be used frequently, but it is an important tool available to the city if needed. And it's not to get political, I chose something other than the city of Finley. But for example, the, the purple is an existing farm. The green is the location of a future factory and they want to be part of the city. They want city services, they want city water, they want city fire and police and they want city tax incentives. We, in this circumstance, we would give the purplish-blue property, the agricultural district, so that they can continue as per their wishes to run their farm. They can have horses and cows, they can have combines, they can have large equipment, they can operate their farm and feel safe that they can operate their farm for the next 20 years under the zoning code. This is a situation we've had in the city of Findlay before. Where without the agricultural district, what I would recommend is giving them R1 zoning. More as protection for the city of what's the worst thing they, they do. But the property owners don't feel protected having a residential zoning operating farm. So again, do I see this as being frequently used and we'll have 50 lots zoned agricultural? No, but under the right circumstances, we have it in our, our list of things, our toolbox in case it does happen.
So Matt, the, we add this in, you're not, we're not making any changes now.
Correct.
Only available to us in the future. People could come to us and ask for that zoning for their lot.
They could.
They could. Would Carlin Street property fit into that?
Um, yes.
Okay.
So one, you know, one thing to remember about zoning requests. The property owner has no right to a zoning change. So that, that's, that's a big distinction. Where if, if, if you have, if you're zoned something and you have a permitted use, you have a right to that use. But if I'm zoned residential and I want to be zoned agricultural, I do not have a right to that change. And so the city, as long as they're not discriminating, can turn it down for pretty much any reason that they choose. So the city still remains in control. So by having this agricultural district, we're not opening a Pandora's box because people have a right to it. It's, it's, it's like any request that someone, a citizen makes of the city, it's not a right. So, and, and remember that with the agricultural, the I3 and the PUD, you know, people will not have a right to these uses.
So Matt, that would be like somebody having an R1 property and saying, well, I want to rezone it M2. You're not, you're, you're not, you don't have a right to the M2 zoning.
Same concept.
You have the right to the uses in R1 district. Subject to regulations because it's legislative matter with the body. But the conversation about this was really, that, that example that Matt showed. You see this as a transitional zoning classification. For that exact example, I would be hard for us to see any property that is currently zoned in the city of Findlay getting an agricultural zoning classification. I just, I, I can't think of one. I, I can't think that the Carlin property would, would get it unless we sold it to a, a farmer and they specifically asked for it. It, it, it is really meant for the, when we, when we go to expand the boundaries and there's a farm in between. And the farmer wants, the farmer wants protection. This offers them protection versus having like these zones. What we do it now is, what is on my industrial, whatever.
Usually, usually R1 is some, some little placeholder because it's the, the least crazy things could happen in that district. So moving on from the new agricultural district, multi-family infill. This also was somewhat related to McPherson in, in one way, the second one, what it is. But we added a statement about the average front yard setback for infill. This is a statement we have for R1, R2, and R3. And we realized we didn't have it for the multifamily. And what it is, if there's structures on each side and you want to build in between, what we utilize as a front setback is the average between the existing ones. Because our, our, our worst case scenario is houses a mismatch. The code says you have to be back 40 feet and all the houses are 10 feet or vice versa. So it's just to help it, help whatever's being built to fit in within the neighborhood. And in addition, added a statement. So that's the front setback. We also added a statement about height, which that infill multifamily shall be limited to the height of the surrounding neighborhood zoning district. So if we were to apply this today to McPherson, his building is 42 feet high. The surrounding zoning allows for 40 feet, so he, he would be limited to 40 feet, which the multifamily was at 50 feet. So it is a 10-foot reduction in what you could do. It's, it's somewhat of a compromise, but it prevents that extra 10 feet predominantly residential neighborhoods. Changes to C2 commercial uses. We removed some uses that we felt were too intense for the C1 district. So permitted uses, restaurants stay, but we removed, but we added the statement, no drive-through or pickup window. We removed pawn shops. So those are the permitted uses that we augmented in the C1 district. Now, under conditional uses, we moved drive-through windows as a permitted conditional use. But pickup windows are a conditional use in C1. Our, our thought was, and this was somewhat a little bit thinking back to the McDonald's situation, looking at what could be built on that property and kind of thought, well, pawn shop isn't a great fit. Restaurant with a drive-through is not a great fit, but potentially just a, a regular restaurant would be a, a decent fit within the C1 district. So we also removed car wash, fueling station, automotive service, and contractor shop. So what's a contractor shop? You know, electrician has a shop with two garages to pull in and they, they keep their phone and their books there and it's, it's 80% storage and you know, like a plumber's office.
Gotcha.
So in other words, to use every now and then, say, as an example, they couldn't blow up the fur of that third building, put in a roll-up door and call it good.
Correct.
But you don't have to blow it up. You just add them to the drive-through length.
Yeah. So those are changes to C1 commercial. With C1, C2 was our most intense commercial. C1 is supposed to be neighborhood commercial. So we just put a fine eye towards what we thought fits best, closest to residential. And so we all made these changes. Design review maintenance requirements. It's a lot of writing for a very simple thing.
So this is concerning the downtown design.
Yeah, downtown design review, which is just downtown area. Currently, so the proposal is to allow the administrator to determine if the complaint is valid before the item is heard by the board. It's removing a clunky step in the process, and I'll, I'll describe that clunky step. The current process is someone sends me a maintenance complaint. We then set up a meeting to discuss if the complaint has merit. The board votes yes. They, they've only voted yes. There's only, there's been three complaints. But we have this weird meeting where we just decide if the complaint is valid or not. Then they, they say, yes, it's valid. Then we have another meeting where the property owner is notified and the board deals with the complaint. You know, talks with them about how they can mitigate it, et cetera. And I put, while well intentioned, the process is very clunky. No other zoning complaint is handled in this manner. The design review board specifically asked me to have this reboot. So that's what this, this changes.
Just that step two for everything?
The first step where we have this weird meeting where we say we have a complaint, but their chip is, their, their paint is peeling. Cause if, if, if the complaint's not valid, they'll, they'll work through that at the meeting. Apologize for calling the meeting, but I don't see an issue here. It's just, we have two meetings when there should only just be one.
And the other part of it is, is if the person, the, the property owner, the complaint has been filed that isn't, doesn't attend the first meeting. They don't know about it because the meeting is only for to determine if the complaint is valid.
They feel, they feel like you had a meeting about my property. That wasn't clear. And it's just, it's, which I understand. And we actually did start notifying them of the first meeting. And then we would just handle the issue when they were there at the first meeting.
You said you did it already.
Yeah, so it is, it is, it sounds a little bit scary, like it'll give the administrator a lot of power. That's, that's really not the case. Electric charging stations. Added public charging stations to C2, O1, C1, C3, M1, and M2 districts as a conditional use.
So you put charging station in your lowest in C1. Public's charging station, but you can't have a gasoline station.
This is conditional use, not like.
I hadn't thought of it that way, but I mean, it, it would be like if you have a so the Denny's. The, the, then when, when Tesla applied for the Denny's, we kind of this, like what we do. So we, we sent it to Planning Commission and we reviewed it. We have this as a conditional use, which means it has to go to Planning Commission.
But the thought is, is a, a, a charging station is a parking spot with a pole in front of it that has a power cord. And that's, and that's, and that's less intensive than a gas station. So it's not like the intent is going to be that. It's going to be a parking lot full of charging stations. It will probably be associated with a, with a, it'll be a conditional use with a, another existing business. You have a, you have a neighborhood pub and they, and they, and they, they, one or two parking stations with, or parking spots have a charging station. This is a conditional use that allows it to happen in these, in these districts.
And as, you know, I would think as technology changes, if it changes, I don't know the future, but if there were, if there become standalone quick service charging stations, then we would adjust that accordingly.
Just not sure if C1 fits in there. Give what you just told us a couple minutes ago. Even as a conditional use, I think your, your, is a good example of potential.
You go have a drink.
I wasn't envisioning, you know, the doctor's office. I was envisioning a primary use where you spend a half an hour to an hour after whatever reason it is, and they have a charging available. I wasn't, I hadn't really envisioned a, a, a whole site that is solely developed, solely devoted to charging.
So do we need to just define charging stations within?
As an accessory, probably. Accessory to a primary use.
I like that because then you can't get the, I'm just building a Tesla charging station here because I can't.
Like they utilize Denny's, which was the C2, but I, you figure C1 on South Main, Kroger's could be possibly. Remember, remember, the, the zoning code's going to change. This is not the final one. And we can take the, you know, we can make these notes for the next, for the next version, but this is, this is for a conditional use, which is a pretty well-defined and, and small, small process. Points, points noted, but if we want to get into a entire, full city council, page by page review of the zoning code, we will never update the zoning code.
I think though, granted, I would point to what I'm taking, but there were, you know, the other things that come to mind when we start going through this new technology. This didn't exist 10 years ago. We didn't have to worry about charging stations. And God only knows what we'll have 10 years from now. Could be the hydrogen building station. Who knows? But there's a couple of other things that kind of go into this category of what's coming up. So if your point is, Grant, we're just updating, I don't know, whenever you say we're updating something, we're opening up books. So are you saying we shouldn't have the discussion? Let's go as it is?
I would say make note of it and. There will never be a perfect code. And if we're, if our goal is to try to get a perfect code and make sure that this thing has everything perfect, we will never pass it.
Totally agree with that. There's no such thing as perfect, especially when it comes to this.
But I, I, I think there was an attempt, at least, on our best attempt to make this as evergreen as we possibly could, right? I mean. If you make the change, you send it back to City Planning. You send it back to City Planning. We're now into October, November, and we're now going to start pushing our December. This has got to be passed. This has got to be on the agenda by the last meeting of November. And, and if we go into a process where we are not going to have the entire council, you know, Planning and zoning looked at this and made a recommendation of put the zoning code in front. The intent of the committee or the whole was not, was, was to share with you the information. It was not, it was not to have this as a, a session where we started making suggested tweaks. And if, if we, if we start doing that, you risk the wrong, you, you risk the, the, you risk the chance that we will not get this passed this year. And then Planning and zoning recommended the, the proposed zoning code as is. And I, my suggestion is you look at it as is and either take it or leave it.
Also, the public charging station, it's a conditional use. It's going to be reviewed. It's not something that's going to get rubber stamped.
Yeah.
So there, there is protection there.
The, the Kroger gas station was a conditional use and conditional uses, when it's a conditional use, the city has much higher ability to say no to that permitted use. So I, I do feel good that we will not have any unwanted mega charging complexes, if that, you know, but it's something to think about. I1 conditional use changes, moved transfer station and recycling center from a permitted use to a conditional use. These two uses can create a lot of debris and smell. This changes to allow Planning Commission more of a say in those projects. And the concern, the concern that was brought up by Planning Commission from someone that has a lot of experience in these fields. He's not talking, he wasn't thinking about litter landing. He was thinking about a multi-state transfer station, multi-state recycling facility, 100 acres and it's, it's quite, it's quite the ordeal. And as a permitted use, that didn't feel great. As a conditional use, we have much more say in the project.
Kind of like Westbury is doing with the, uh, same, same situation here.
I don't know. It's a landfill, but same, same idea.
I'm fully versed in it, but yeah. Okay, new develop, new zoning category, large scale, I3 large-scale development. Proposed a third industrial district, I3. The purpose of this district is to allow for alternative, alternative energy sources such as wind turbines. This proposed change does not permit large-scale wind farm projects that generate electricity for the grid. The power generated by the wax wind energy conversion systems, sorry, shall primarily serve a single user at a single location. No wind turbine shall be constructed or continue to operate if it does not serve a single user at a single location. This is intended to provide the possibility of having a wind turbine within the city limits while protecting the interests of the residents. This is a tool for the city to have. Is it, is it a classification that I think will be prominent now? The idea, over the last several years, tried to juggle, you know, kind of the new technology that's occurring on the north side of town. There are pros and cons to it. Wind turbines can be intrusive and bothersome to residential development. On the plus side, I've been on many economic development meetings where a company is learning about Findlay and they're like, we want one of those. Because they have their own corporate goals of being 30% green and all these things. And they see this unique situation where we have wind turbines flowing directly into a factory. And they are very intrigued by that. Sometimes it's the most that they're interested in Findlay is that wind turbine there. So it's a selling point for Findlay. It makes us different than other communities. So.
And right now they're not.
And right now.
They're not permitted.
They're not permitted. Essentially, they're not permitted in the city of Findlay. All the wind turbines that we have are in unzoned, out, out. So, you know, I, I, over the years, I've thought of several different ways to do this. I've thought about. So, you know, I I, over the years, I've thought of several different ways to do this. I've thought about. An overlay district, I've thought about conditional uses and. You know, I think the mayor actually came up with this one, but. You know, what really. After the McDonald's situation and really learning and understanding that, you know, rezoning is not a right. You know, I feel like having this. So having this as a tool is is not a danger. And city planning commission, planning and zoning, and city council would all have to say yes to this rezoning in order for it to go through. And, you know, we all, you know, another. Big factory goes up on the north side of town and they have a site next to them that's annexed within the city. You know, it we we will entertain that possibility. And they can present us the information and the city decide that's a good good decision.
Yeah, and two other points I would make on why we really recommended the specific zoning classification. Is one, because then we are able to better protect the airport. Again, it's not necessarily. You get a specific zoning or not, and as he said, it's the discretion of. All the different steps. The other thing is it's important to developers or different entities to know the specific. Abilities they have when they buy a property. Right, so if somebody buys a property, it's certainly undeveloped, and they say this is I three, this is a spot where you can do this. And they know for certain, and they're not going to have to go back and do a conditional use form. So it provides that protection and expectation.
So in other words. This type of proposal still gives for three safeguards, planning commission, P and Z, and council vote.
Correct.
And of note, our our current wind tur- wind turbine ordinance is very bad. It did not ever anticipate what has happened on the north side of town, that there would be wind turbines. Close to the city functioning to power, you know, so.
It's the exact thing that the judge just said. The technology changes are so fast.
Yep.
Right. And it uh, it added links to a. Uh, regulation that doesn't exist.
It there's a governing board that is no longer.
There's a fund. So the the question I've got here, and Grant, I know, I'm not trying to make any changes because I I agree with Grant. Your fifth bullet down though says no wind turbine shall be constructed or continue to operate if it doesn't serve a single user. What happens when those things no longer serve a single user or don't operate?
There is.
Is there something in our code to deal with that?
There is, um, in the code, there's a decommissioning section. Uh, essentially, if it fails to operate for a period of. A period of time, it's six months, it's ninety, I I don't know the period of.
That's okay, don't worry about that.
But.
Then who pays for that?
The city has the right to tear it down and assess the property. It will be a slow repayment potentially, but it will come eventually.
I think the uh, the more likely scenario here for this is that you have a have factory A and then they have the. Wind turbines supplying factory A, factory A changes, and now it it changes to they they co-opt or. Whatever, they split it into two factories owned by two separate entities. So now you have the wind turbine potentially. Uh, serving two users. In the same facility. A solution for that is to go to B C A.
Yeah. Then. I just saw.
Try and write write code that.
No, that's that makes sense. I just go, I was just simply asking what happens when things die of natural death.
Yeah.
They have a life cycle on them.
There is a, there is a.
You're making a go nowhere and take them all down? Not all, but you never.
There is a decommissioning section to it though.
Okay.
Uh, creation of a traditional P U D. Life is full circle sometimes. Uh, Finley used.
Plan unit development.
So Finley used to have a traditional P U D ordinance. It was replaced uh with. The P M U D planned mixed use development, planned residential development. P M U D and P R D have been on the books for about twelve years and they were never used. There were too many bad sections of it. Too many requirements for, you know, fifty percent of the property has to be green space, all these kinds of what I almost call poison bills. Where developers look at it and they're like, we can't do this. So what we want to get back to is the traditional plan unit development and what that is. Each P U D is a separate and unique zoning district negotiated between the city and the developer. So I have a hundred acres. And I outlined that I want to do forty acres of this type of residential, twenty acres of office and. Fifteen acre, whatever combination it is, and I want to have a density of this, I want to do this. That's all negotiated between the city and the developer. And then then it goes through the process of essentially what this process we're going to, that goes to planning commission. It's planning and zoning, and it goes to city council. Um, one of the things that I liked about it the best. Is the last, second to last bullet point, uh, this is a benefit to the city. Rather than sitting there and considering what's the worst thing that they can do with this property when we rezone it? Which is the question we ask ourselves for every rezoning. You know, I I'm requesting a rezoning and I promise you I'm going to build a three-story office building. I'm not, we cannot hold them to that under traditional zone. With the P U D, it's written into. The plan and it is enforceable and they must build exactly what we agreed to. So that's whenever we have a rezoning, it's always like, yes, I like what you're saying. We're rezoning it to whatever category. I I hope you do that. But I look on the list of things that they can also do and get a little nervous because I always, you always have to consider what's the worst thing they could do with this rezoning. And like I mentioned, it provides flexibility that a standard zoning district does not allow. Combines the process of rezoning and site plan review into one process. And essentially, we've had projects in the past that would have liked to utilize the P U D. And they were kind of shocked that we didn't have a traditional P U D. Um, and so we'd like to get back to having this traditional tool that's very beneficial.
Bullet item that is not there, this is uh, has to be five acres or one. If the property, if a P U D. Came through and they wanted to be, and they were four point nine nine acres, they'd have to go to B C A to get the variance. But uh, so I I've been asked by a few folks on this, actually, the zoning code. Have a lot of interesting questions, but it's not like you could go take, uh, I couldn't take my house and rezone it as a P U D, it's too small. I couldn't rezone the uh. The proposed, the proposed McDonald's site down on South Main and Sixth because it's 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 too small. I couldn't do a single, what was your example, uh, target?
When I was, when I was in Fishers, Indiana, we built an Harvey's via P U D.
Yeah.
And it's essentially rather than going to B Z A, they just did a P U D. And so that's why we put. But we did, I believe we did add language that. Or they would just get very like Lincoln School would be a great opportunity for the P U D.
But Lincoln would be one, I think.
The city could say it has to be X amount residential, it can only be X amount commercial, and it has to have this and has to have that. So.
That that development of various work with the. Mallish type outside area.
Yeah, that's a P U D.
Uh, if you redevelop the mall, you would potentially see a P U D there uh for for it. So these are not for for uh bigger development type projects. And then you also mentioned. The uh combination of site plan and zoning review. So many times you see. You see a a company come in and they say, we need to rezone this, and this is what we're going to do. And they present on the same, but as Matt said. It it never, that doesn't matter. The guy can always go belly up or not end up developing and the rezone still still happens. Combined the two, there's really a lot of ways that that those development processes go through. And this is just, this is just a good tool. It's probably one of the bigger. I would expect this to get used um a lot more frequently than the I three and the A one. And this is some more change, but it's.
Uh, wind turbine and solar power rewrite rewrite. Um, so as I mentioned before, our wind turbine ordinance was in poor shape. And actually, I was somewhat afraid that it wasn't protecting us. From someone putting in a wind turbine. So we updated the wind turbine ordinance. Only permitted in the I three district, apply modern setbacks. It must provide electric service directly to a building. Uh, solar power. Just just fixed up the essentially the existing ordinance, but better define the use of solar power. Uh, accessory solar power is permitted in all districts. So that's all districts can attach solar power according to the guidelines to their building or on the ground. Which is how it is currently. Um, and then we addressed larger solar uh fields. That would be permitted in C two, I one, I two, and I three. Um, there's two sizes, there's medium and large. Uh, those are for. Kind of like what you would think of as a large solar field. I don't think any of it would be kind of like a mega. Because this amount of. Space it would take, but. Uh, someone might ask, why'd you include it in C two? You know, I could see a situation where a Walmart. A Walmart or someplace has. Five thousand square feet of green grass behind it, and they want to put up solar panels along with on top of their roofs and stuff. So that's that's why we did include it in C two. Uh, but they are conditional uses, so the city would get to that. Somebody had mentioned to us in Arizona, they use carpors on their parking. The Starbucks has solar power parking.
Can you, can you make sure that's not taken into consideration?
Yeah. Okay, added a requirement for accessory structures that are used for storing or parking vehicles. Uh, the access to the building must be paid from the property line to the structure. So this standard already exists in the code. Uh, but it did not include improved alleys. So essentially, this standard is, you know, if you're building a house, you have to build a paid driveway. And if if you're building, so I I included this picture. If you see fifteen, three, four, if they built that accessory garage. You can see there's no, it's just grass and gravel. If they built that today with this code, they would have had to pay the entrance to their garage area. From an improved alley. So this this code was here from from streets, but we're essentially just adding improved alleys to it. Uh, parking in R one to R four prohibits the parking of semi trucks, taxi cabs, garbage hauling slash scrapping vehicles. The standard is already in the code. We moved it from the R one and R four sections to the parking section. Similar situation. In multifamily prohibit the parking of semi trucks, taxi cabs, et cetera, already in the code, moved it to the parking section. Uh, this one got some traction, a little bit of confusion uh in the in the beginning, utility trailers in commercial and industrial settings. Requires utility trailers to be parked or stored more than thirty feet from the right of way or within ten feet of the primary building. Must be parked on a hard surface and registered to that address. Purpose is use is is to reduce the use of trailers, use this signage. These trailers are often used as a way to circumvent the existing portable signage rules. So when I took a snapshot along Tiffin Avenue, if you see the red line that's going up. This is thirty feet. So essentially what this is saying is you cannot park or store a trailer here for weeks on end. Within this thirty foot area, essentially the first row of parking along Tiffin Avenue or other streets.
And by the way, you can't use it as a.
Yeah, I mean, that's. That's so there's, that's. That's, many other communities have a similar, we, you know, we borrowed this essentially from other communities, but. It's been an issue Eric's tried to enforce and has been kind of. Foiled because we didn't address it, let's say correctly. Eric, do you have any comments? I think we got it.
Something we haven't. We're not saying that it can't be parked on the site. It just can't be parked right along the road, right along the right away.
Uh, quite a few changes to the sign code. Removed pylon signs as a permitted sign option. Uh, pylon sign is, you think of Menards' stall sign, a pole and a sign on top. Um, we removed those as an option. Uh, city planning commission. Really, for the last three or four years, has pretty much required ground signs. So if you look at Turkey Hill or any anything new coming along, we pretty much requested at at site plan time to do the ground sign. So the primary option for signage will be ground mounted signs. Eight feet tall is measured from the crown of the road. That's in case, you know, your 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 level of ground is two feet lower than the crown of the road, then it can be ten feet. So that it's visible correctly from the roadway. So this is really, you know, we we did not remove highway. The pylon signs within, there's something called highway.
High rise.
Uh, high rise pylon sign within fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah.
See, the twelve hundred or fifteen, we did, we did not augment that part of the code. You know, gas stations near the highway or facilities near the highway will still be allowed a pylon sign as as they are today. But really, this is for an aesthetic purposes, just to help beautify our community. C three district, this is another thing that the downtown design review board requested. We don't have wall sign restrictions anywhere in the community, uh, but they did want them in the downtown district. So wall sign size is based upon the frontage of the building. The designer review board has been essentially. Utilizing this for the last two years. We have a formula, uh, we looked at quite a few communities. Uh, Tiffin has a really good formula. You know, if you have fifteen feet of frontage, you get X amount of sign. And you get X amount of sign, but those signs are kind of right sized for the downtown. Uh, the board wanted and would appreciate having it codified. So that it's not just always kind of a suggestion working on. Electronic message boards. Me and Todd always got into this a lot. But it's limited, and I think we're we're going to the original intent of the code, which I always argue. Limited to twenty-five percent of the total constructed sign. Todd would often allow, or. In the past, they would often allow. You didn't, twenty-five percent of whatever you were allowed, but you didn't have to build the rest of it.
So if you were eighty square feet and the sign was twenty square feet. They could do five, I mean.
The whole thing would be a electronic message board.
Okay.
Uh, temporary banners. Uh, we have a temporary banner section. There's no timeframe associated with it. So it's hard to work with temporary when it's not defined. So we define that as a property can have. A temporary banner for thirty days, no more than three times per year. Uh, billboards, we added language to limit the construction. Of new billboards and the conversion of digital billboards. So there's a distance between billboards where you're allowed to put up another. We increased the required distance from five hundred feet to twenty-five hundred feet. So this essentially. There's one or two places where one more could be placed, but this would essentially put. The kibosh on new billboards coming into our community. Non-conforming pylon signs. This is somewhat of a sunsetting clause, some people call it. After December thirty first, twenty thirty-three. After December 31st, 2033, the replacement of the sign face or any other changes constitute a loss of the non-conforming status and must be brought up to the current standards. So I mentioned Menards sign. If Menards is here 100 years from now, they can still have their pylon sign, but Menards leaves and, uh, a mega hardware store comes in, um, and it's the year 2035, then changing out the Menards constitutes the loss of the non-conforming use and they have to bring it back down within the ground sign. And this is, this is a, a strategy that's been used by a lot of other communities. And so I looked at several different ways to do it and I thought this was the best way.
Where that really reduces the value of that property.
It's done, this doesn't apply to the, well, like Menards specifically perhaps, but this doesn't, again, doesn't impact the highway signage.
Conditional uses, we remove all the specific criteria for each conditional use. The concern is when the applicant meets the conditions, use conditions, are we stuck? So gas station, our conditional use section says the conditions for a gas station are weird, tank access, access, da, 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 screening. So my, always my concern was that most communities go, do it the way we're proposing it is, you don't list any criteria for the conditional use, you just list, this is a difference, but there's seven general criteria to evaluate a conditional use as outlined by the House of Court. Like BZA, these are different than BZAs, but it's the question, the seven questions you ask of every conditional use rather than listing out these weird arbitrary rules that may or may not be pertinent to what you're looking at. Swimming pool fences, increase the size from 42 to 48 to be in line with industry standards. Allow pools with complying safety covers to forego fencing. You have any questions about that, ask Eric. Good standing clause clearly states that the good standing clause pertains to a single parcel, not to any parcel with the same owner. I guess these, these were changes to the good standing clause that were lived and learned through a past court case and just we would clearly wanted to identify that, uh, it's not all the parcels that the person owns, it's the violation on that parcel only applies to that parcel for the good standing clause. The good standing clause is, uh, if you have a, if, if I have a violation for my building's not set back correctly and I come in for another permit, the city says, you can't get your second permit until you fix your first issue. Bed and breakfast, this is an issue that will need to be addressed in the future, I believe, but we did some minor work here. We modified the existing definition. We reviewed the Airbnbs under the bed and breakfast regulations. We had a recent person at Planning Commission complain that it wasn't clearly stated that Airbnbs are subject to the bed and breakfast, uh, criteria. So we, we modified the definition and then I added the definition of transient guest. There's no real change in policy, but it really ties them together. If you have an Airbnb or the like, that there are standards.
Is Airbnb a generic term?
No. That's, that's branding.
Yes.
But I, and that's, that's where we had to, I had to add the transient guest definition. And that's renting a residential place for a period of less than 28 days.
Gotcha.
And that is it. Sorry.
You're gonna make the poor viewers at home.
No, I didn't even think about that.
Questions, there's a lot here, I understand, but, uh, as I said before, it's, as much as there was here, this is really, this, these are tweaks. There are some big things in here, the zoning code changes, uh, or the sign changes are probably, uh, the PUD are probably two of the bigger ones, but, uh, that's what, that's what's contained in the proposal. And I, you know, the short term models, I'm sure, I'm sure that will get more discussion, probably next year. We'll continue to see a push to protect neighborhoods, which we saw some efforts with our, uh, reducing the permitted uses in, uh, C one, for example. Parking might come up for next year, but I've talked about some parking tweaks we wanted to potentially start looking at, but, uh, Planning and zoning committee and City Planning, Planning and Zoning specialists spent a lot of time looking at this. I know there's a lot there, questions, reach out to myself or Brian, Danny, Jimmy, Holly, on a few of the things, you can try to explain it further. Now from here forward is to, uh, I think we have it on legislation for our next meeting, three meetings. And then, uh, so finally, it would be second meeting in October. It's the, it's the half forward.
Let's say you did a lot of work, uh, to get to this point, even these, you know, relatively minor tweaks, a lot of minor tweaks, take a lot of time and effort, certainly appreciate all those things that you did. The, I would add two comments that I would add to this. One, um, I think we need to continue to define emerging technology, things that are going to come at us faster and faster. We talked about the charging stations, we talked about wind turbines, uh, the Airbnbs, how do we deal with those? You know, another one to add in there is, uh, home businesses where people were running, what's the young lady that bought an Allen's house, you know, a multimillionaire that has a YouTube site.
Influencer.
Excuse me.
Influencer.
Thank you.
You just referred me to think millennial, yeah.
Mayor, Mayor.
Uh, it's all right.
Said they boomer.
Yeah. I wasn't going there, I wasn't going there, that's like.
Thank you very much. The, and then the second thing is, you know, the one thing that keeps coming to mind and I, and I look at all the changes, Grant, and again, I'm not proposing to make any changes, but I think when we look at these things, the one thing that comes to my mind is we have to protect the property rights of the owner and the value of that property. And, you know, I made the comment, Matt, Menards situation, you picked the one place probably where that new rule would kick in. If it wasn't Menards anymore, they wouldn't be able to have that huge sign.
Sure.
Right? I can't, I can't think of any others right off the bat, but there's probably some. Lowe's, I don't know if Lowe's.
Yeah.
Wasn't that big, but.
No, Menards is the tallest one.
Right. Yeah. It's from Arlington.
The winner even sent it from, and you can see it from Arlington.
Very nice. But, uh, you know, as much as we may not appreciate that sign, uh, it does reduce the value of that property, Mr. Menard, you know, then loses value of the property because they spent a lot of money to build that thing.
Sure.
Those were not cheap. And, uh, so we just have to be confident of those changes and as we go along with this, that was my two points on them.
Yeah, I would also just like to echo the work of the committee, having multiple meetings and really fleshing things out and taking feedback and having discussions. And I know more work to be done on the Farm Animal, but definitely Eric and Matt, we had many a work session, working through things and researching, and their expertise is obviously invaluable, so I really appreciate both of you and all the work you guys did on this.
I would make a motion, well, we don't even need a motion, they know, correct?
Yeah.
We do, we're done.
Thank you all for your time and for coming.
Seems like you guys have provided more certainty for property ownership, what their permitted uses are, and you kind of clean that up on the PUDs. I think it provides certain benefits to the people and businesses.
And hopefully it also provides peace of mind to the neighborhood, right? Like I think that that's another thing we're, we're looking at as our community has developed, there's now also an opportunity to learn some of the issues that have occurred and how to protect the property owner, but also protect the neighborhood and provide some peace of mind. So, good stuff.
And with that, we'll call this committee a whole, a term.
The millennial will show the technology now.